Okay, sir, if you would please continue.
This, by charging people for parking downtown, we are doing nothing more than taxing each individual, whether he be a resident or non-resident, an employer or employee, a tax of some $360 a year. And in my way of thinking of things, that's taxation without representation, which is against our Constitution. So, somebody's got to really start thinking about what needs to be done and how the customers of these businesses can be assisted by making sure there's people in the stores so that they can maintain a business and make sure that they stay in this town and not to be taxed out of it.
Thank you. Okay, the council have any other? Oh, excuse me, Jack, you had indicated you'd like to speak. Jack Glucki.
I just wanted to speak to the fact that as the letter that was submitted on behalf of the Main Street Executive Board at the last council meeting, under information that it is our standing as the board for the Main Street Group that the council would take a little bit more time with this. Whether it's to evaluate the results of the survey is only part of that. Our other concern is with the details of how this is going to be administered, when it's going to go into effect, and all of that, I understand, will be worked out by the staff, but the people most affected by it are not getting that information out in front. So I think that that needs to be considered also, and we would, again, reiterate our desire to have it tabled, at least until, as council or all of them personally, Doss has indicated, till sometime in November, maybe your second meeting, to give enough time that discussions can take place with the affected people. It's not that anyone is not in favor of this. We have many people who've expressed a desire to be allowed to have a place reserved by a permit and are willing to pay that as opposed to paying what they currently are doing if they get ticketed at $20 a ticket. They'd much rather pay a permit fee and be guaranteed a place to park downtown. And that's been expressed at several of the RDA meetings as well. So there are people very interested in this. They would like to see it implemented, but they would like to have that, all of the details fleshed out before they actually get on board with it. So I would offer that to the council to consider. Thank you.
Counselor, anything else?
I wanted to say one other thing, and that kind of piggybacks on what Jack said. In my original note to you from the RDA, I indicated that the RDA had requested that the swimming pool lot, the lot on North, I don't know what street that is. Fourth Street. 75 spaces be made available at no cost to people for long-term parking. And it's my understanding that, for some reason, that that is not acceptable, that that be designated between September 1 and May 31. Those were that that would be the time when the swimming pool is closed. And so that would be another reason that I think there's need to table this. So I make a motion to table. Second.
I heard Patrice first. I had an echo down here, but let's say Patrice. So a motion to the second to table. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No date was given for bringing back.
You're right. There wasn't.
No. We might table it till two years from now.
We'll put it on there, and if the council wishes to bring it back, they can at any meeting, actually. Item D is going to be very, very difficult for us, so everybody gird yourself for the ordeal. Item D is to reschedule or cancel the December 25 council meeting.
If we reschedule, when?
I'd make a motion, we cancel it.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Make your case, Patrice.
All right.
Nothing?
Hey, that's good news.
All right, we will need a roll call vote for that, please.
Nichols?
I'm really tempted to vote no, but I'll vote yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Much as I love this, I'm going to vote yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Nobody wants to meet on Christmas Day. All right, go figure. Item E is the Jewett and Madison Streets contract. I'm going to let either Larry or Howard explain this. I know the details. I think most of the council does, but we'll let them make clear what it is for anyone watching.
Okay, as proposed in this fiscal note to talk to everybody, during the Jewett and Madison Street reconstruction project, the heavy dump trucks used Jewett and Madison to and from the project site over to Lancaster Street. As a result of the heavy trucks stopping and starting, the pavement on these streets took more extensive damage than we anticipated. They shoved the pavement, causing slippage between layers of blacktop and between the blacktop and gravel. Some damage is to be expected and accounted for by the contractor, but this is more extensive mainly due to the weak structure and age of the pavement. And staff does not believe it is appropriate to require the contractors to repair the entire damaged pavement. We have a number of different options. One would be to make repairs to specific damaged areas at an approximate cost of $47,300. Under this scenario, approximately 2/3 of the length of Madison from the project site to Lancaster would need to be replaced. To replace all of it would cost approximately $67,500. What we were looking at is if we were to wait and not do it under this contract, the cost could be approximately $75,100. We do have a CIP fund balance that we could take this money from. Or the other thing that I was proposing, if we did not have a fund balance, was to use some street repair money that we would use for thin overlays and things like that. Some of the issues, some of the things to consider. The section from Hathaway to Lancaster was last reconstructed in 1973. curb and gutter is in fair condition. There's some damage, but we believe it's in good enough shape to last for a while. Storm sewer probably dates from that period, and we believe it to be in fair condition with no guarantees. Underground utilities, originally, we thought that those would be, that they would be in good shape. It appears as though they were, it was last done in 1973 with that section of street. However, we've had a number of water main breaks in the past three to four years and one just recently. One of the things that we also found as a result of that water main break was that when this was reconstructed, somebody did it kind of what I would consider a little backwards. We have, at least in the site of the, in the area of the break, we have about three inches of gravel with four to six inches of asphalt above it. And the lack of gravel base is one of the contributing factors of the problem. Just so that you understand, one of our, our normal residential street is 12 inches of gravel and about three inches of asphalt. As I said, we have a number of options to consider. If we were to do a full reconstruction, we're talking a little over 1,400 feet. We would be talking about an $800,000 total reconstruction. About $430,000 for street and storm, about $370,000 for water and sewer. That would be, now, as we can understand, full reconstruction is great, but the biggest limiting factor is the cost. And we could not do that in 2010. We would have to look at our CIP priorities at that point. One would be, another option is, as I said, repair the entire street surface for about $67,500. We're looking at probably a 10-year lifespan, unless we get water main breaks, in which case we have patches in that. The problems, as you can tell, are the probability of water main breaks. We can replace only the damaged sections. It has, it's a little bit less costly. It has more joints because we're breaking, you know, having some areas in between. One other option that we were, that we had looked at was the possibility of milling up or grinding off a few inches. And basically, that would be about the same cost as the, as removal and replace of the repair surface, about $67,500, give or take. That milling and overlay would give us about the same, same life. One of the things is that it uses the existing asphalt, and it would pulverize it and make it as gravel to go onto that street. So we would, in essence, have a larger layer of gravel, if you will, underneath a new asphalt pavement. And then the other least desirable would be to just basically Band-Aid it with some cold mix wherever we've got these little breaks. I don't have a good estimate on that, and that would end up being repaired at length and at many different times, most likely during the winter as snowplows go over it and things like that. If we were to do, schedule a full reconstruction for 2013, that would be a good option to get us through the winter. But that would be about the only thing that I'm, that I'm thinking of. At this point, I believe that my recommendation would be to do our milling and overlaying at this point. I did bring Dan Dresson in. He, he's been out there looking at it in case you had any specific questions for him. That would be, my, my recommendation is to mill it and then overlay it with brand-new asphalt at about the same price as removal and replacement of the asphalt, $67,500.
Thank you, Howard. Questions for Howard?
Yes, if you mill that, Howard, do you mill just so much or do you mill all the blacktop that's laid on that last lay?
We would have to look at the weather reports and everything else. If we mill everything, then we open up the gravel below. If it's going to rain or have anything like that, then, then it could turn to soup. If we have a good week or so of decent weather, like right now, we're, we're scheduled to have a week or so of relatively dry weather. We could possibly do that, and, and it could support the trucks going over top of it.
You said you thought this, it had been done in 1973, so you're talking 40 years ago. So when would this be normally scheduled to be updated, on the normal schedule? 2013, 2014, or what? Have you looked at that?
The actual normal or someone else's normal?
Well, I mean, what are we, what are we looking at here? You know what I mean?
Well, it was not on our five-year plan because of the condition of the surface at the time that we were last looking at it. It was in poor-to-fair condition. We felt that it could last a number of years, now, to get us out past our five years.
But one option would be now, obviously, if you were looking at it, it would be on that five-year plan.
Yes.
And one option would be to redo it in 2013 and to take something that we currently have scheduled for 2013 out of 2013.
That's correct.
Which one would that be, Steve?
It'd be Broadway.
This seems like such a small amount of money compared to what reconstruction and everything costs that we ought to really consider just fixing this thing. We'll get it presumably another 15 years out of it, at which point in time we'll be ready to be thinking about.
We'll be good.
Yeah, there we go. We'll be off the council. But you'll be, we'll be ready for underground work, water and sewer and stuff. And so it's, life roughly coincides with when that would have to be done.
Am I to understand that this is Madison Street?
Yes.
And am I also to understand that there have been three water main breaks and a more recent water main break on Madison Street?
That's correct.
So now we're going to spend $67,500 and pave it and then dig it up next week to fix another water main break?
It's up to you.
There, there is that possibility.
I want to see them all fixed by now.
I also have another question. The $67,500 that is available in the CIP, where is that available from?
Or his fund balance, isn't it?
The.
That fund balance? Or are you taking somebody else's CIP money?
Oh, it's.
Fund balance.
Dwayne says it's a fund balance.
Fund balance, so it's not part of what's been allocated to the airport? It is not?
Airport is part of it.
Pardon?
Airport is part of it, like $80,000, I think it is.
So the six, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding. Is the $67,500, is part of that money allocated to the airport?
No.
Okay, so this is money, so this does not affect the airport budget, then?
That's correct.
It would only affect the budget of streets?
No.
Is that where the CIP money is available from?
The CIP fund balance is where it's proposed to take the money from.
Okay.
It's the fourth paragraph on the blue sheet.
I know.
There's $273,000 balance in the CIP fund balance.
Which is available with a portion dedicated to the airport. I don't understand what that means.
$80,000 of that 273 has been dedicated to the airport projects. Yep, so there is roughly $200,000 remaining.
And why do we have $200,000 in that account?
It's, Dwayne, I don't know if you want to answer that, but my understanding is it's probably from past projects that came in under, under what we anticipated.
2012 projects.
2011. I don't know if it's all 2012.
It's a combination of the last two years where the CIP projects, there's obviously some, some monies were not spent, and we got some other monies that may have come in on revenues that were more than projected, but majority of it was unspent monies. It's a combination of a lot of different items in the last two years.
We would typically use that fund balance to, to reduce what we have to borrow in any given year.
So if we use it, we borrow more. Right?
To me, that makes sense. Because if the fund balance is there and you use it.
I mean, it isn't like it's free money.
Right, it's not free money, obviously.
Okay, I mean, if we use it on this, we're going to have to borrow more money for something else. Right?
I have a question. In the staff report, Howard had said we could ask them, meaning the contractor, I believe, to make repairs to specific damaged areas for approximately $47,300. So your proposal, then, is 67,500. Is the 47,300 added on to that? Or how does that work?
What I meant by that was if we only did the, the repairs to those areas that were specifically damaged, the cost would be approximately $47,300. If we, if we removed and replaced the entire street, it goes up to 67,500.
So what amount would the contractor pay?
None.
Why are we not asking the contractor to pay for a portion of this? Why are we not acting, asking the contractor to pay 47,300? Whose responsibility should it been to look, be watch? Who was responsible for, as part of this contract, to see that these trucks didn't drive over that street? Who would be an ongoing onsite responsibility for that overview?
These, these trucks have to go somewhere.
Right.
Okay, and I, I required the trucks to use Jewett and Madison Street instead of, for example, our newer street, like Hathaway Street, in order to get to State Highway 81, Lancaster Street, which is designed for that heavy truck traffic. The issue here is that I was not here in 1973 when the street was built, so I don't, I didn't know that the, that the street was built in to, not to current standards.
It's rather unusual to find a street with three inches of gravel. Is that true?
Yes, exactly. We don't believe that the contractor would have had any reason to believe that, that that street couldn't hold up.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at, I drove over that street the other day, and I looked at that first block from Lancaster on where the most of the damage is. And it would seem that, that just didn't happen overnight. And it would seem like somewhere in this process, with all those trucks driving down, this was going on all summer long, that somebody would have looked at that and says, maybe that's not the street we ought to be driving on.
The alternative being the newer street.
Well, if the newer street was a stronger street, that probably would have been a wise alternative.
Yeah. Ken?
Question I have is if a contractor did this street, what would be the cost, normal cost to do in the street as far as what's proposed? Is this $67,000 a reduction from what the cost would be normally?
Oh, from the third.
In other words, are we getting a bargain here as far as the $67,000?
Yes.
Even though the person, the contractor is not paying the 47, is the 47 a part of a bargain?
Well, what we had done was with Dan from Delta 3, we estimated what it would, what it would cost to do the entire removal and installing of, of new pavement as a separate contract, not as part of, as part of this work. And in paragraph 3, that was that $75,100 that we're looking at.
So they're reducing the $75,000 down to 67?
That's correct.
We, we have them locked into a contract at X dollars. And if we amend that contract, we get it at a lower rate than if we had to bid it out again.
Well, ultimately, what this is, is an opportunity which we do not have to take advantage of. We can either try to fix this now in this fashion. We can put it on CIP later, reconstruct the whole thing. We can do nothing except cold patch it. We can do any number of things. The question is whether this is a reasonable action, given that we have a chance to do this for a little bit cheaper than we might have ordinarily been able to do it. Maybe we shouldn't do it, but it was an option and we had a chance to look at it, so that's why it's here.
Do you feel there's just absolutely no responsibility for the contractor here? The trucking company?
I, I don't believe so, no.
Now, I'm thinking about how hot it was this summer and we had those days. I mean, that's the kind of thing where you might have just had a confluence of events where that asphalt was just as stressed as it could be and they had a heavy truck, and then there you are.
I assume they have some insurance to cover these type of things, and I think there's something to say that they should have some eyes open.
To me, like, it might have happened just one day.
Howard, have you had any conversation with the, with the contractor about the damage?
I have not directly. Maybe Dan, I don't know.
Let's hear from Dan if he's got anything to say.
Three Engineering, we did talk to the contractor a little bit about it. The contractor's position was that they were directed to utilize Jewett Street and Madison Street for the reasons that Howard indicated, that, one, we weren't around in 1973 to know how poorly it was constructed. Two, we didn't want to drive trucks down Hathaway Street, which was just reconstructed last year. The work, Steve, you were asking about, it did occur pretty much in like one to two days timeframe. We had them on Jewett Street. It started pulling, Jewett Street started coming apart. We put them on Madison Street. Madison Street really started coming apart. We had no place else to go because we did not want to take them down Hathaway Street. So that was, that, you know, so you asked. It did, and it was a, it was a coming together of many problems. Poor street subgrade, poor street pavement structure, and then the hot temperatures. That's what caused the pavement pulling apart. If you were to go back and have the contractor fix that street at their cost, you're right, their insurance does cover it. However, I guess my warning to that is that the contractors will talk. They will find out about that. And now, potential projects in the future will start costing more money because they're going to have to include that in their bid. It's almost as if a bidder beware type thing. You're going to bid on a street. You're going to look at your routes. Well, we're going to go down a street that's 10, 20, 30, 40 years old. City of Plavo now just made, made Contractor A replace part of it. We're going to need to start putting some money in our bids to protect ourselves. So that is the, the one warning about having your contractor pay for it. And it was circumstances out of their control.
We assumed in a Hathaway Street, when it was rebuilt, it was rebuilt as, as a residential street, not heavy-duty.
Correct, right, right.
If this were approved, how soon could the contractor do the job, do the work?
Talking with Iverson, they're, it's a matter of just fitting it into their schedule. The big thing is, is getting the milling machine in here. I was telling Howard that last week the mill machine was sitting around idle. Could have gotten in here and done the work. We just got to get on their schedule and, and see when they can do it. And like Howard said, if we can get a nice dry period of weather, you know, we can get them in there and try to get it done. If we can get a, if we can get a dry period, as Howard mentioned, we'd mill the whole street up, try to add the base. If not, we'll just mill the top two to, two to two and a half inches of, of paving off and then just do an overlay. And that's, and Iverson felt pretty good about that.
Other questions for Dan?
This doesn't solve our water main break problem, so we will just be, might as well just count on digging up new pavement.
Well, I agree, Barb, that that, you know, is a concern, but obviously, from what I understand, the water and sewer utility is not in position to fund that this year. So, and I was driving on Madison Street before Howard brought this to our attention, and it is just awful. I mean, it, it's really a hazard. I felt like my car was going to just sort of drop. So I will make a motion to approve Contract 1122, Jewett Street Reconstruction in the amount of $67,500 with the funding to come from the CIP fund balance.
Second to the motion.
The motion is a second, discussion.
Well, I still think we should, I still think we should ask the contractor for some, assume some portion of this cost. So I'm going to vote no.
I would agree with that if it had been a street that was constructed properly, but since it obviously was not. I do understand what both Howard and Dan are saying I do understand what, uh, both Howard and Dan are saying about responsibility of the contractor. And by the way, West Hill was reconstructed and heavy trucks were driving over it the next year, and I was just cringing every time they were doing it, it was like, why did we just reconstruct West Hill? And I see all these heavily loaded trucks going over it, and they did that rather than going around the curve on Perry Drive. So I, I'm happy that they didn't go on Hathaway.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Delucky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Das?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under information and discussion items tonight, we have Item Eight, the Contract for TIT seven amendment. Larry or Joe?
Yeah, we, we had, uh, previously discussed this at a different meeting, uh, the idea of amending, uh, the downtown TIF district, TIT seven, to include, uh, all of the library block, since that, uh, has been discussed as a potential redevelopment site. Um, that way, any, any project value within that block could be captured as part of the, the TIT increment. Um, so we had requested proposals, uh, at Council Direction, uh, to do that work. Uh, we received four proposals, Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, Veerbecker Associates, Ellers and Associates, and Vanderwall and Associates. And as part of that proposal, we had also asked, uh, for a kind of a second project. A separate proposal would be to do a, an overall analysis of the, all the TIF districts uh, to see if there are any other opportunities for either, uh, boundary amendments, project plan amendments, um, setting up donor districts, just a fiscal analysis of the districts, see how they're performing, and if there are any other changes that make sense, uh, to do that. So that would be kind of a separate, uh, line item, so, um, this is just on for information, so we'll have a further discussion at the next meeting. Any questions?
Nope, no questions? Apparently none.
Uh, will you have a recommendation at the next meeting?
Yes.
Will you have a comparison of these, uh, proposals?
Uh, yeah, we can put together advantages, disadvantages of the-
That'd be great.
-two different ones.
Would, would you like all of the bids photocopied again a second time for your next meeting, or?
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's a significant packet, I thought maybe if you didn't need all the documents again, save some paper, but-
I'll save it.
I'll leave it right here in front of me.
Okay.
I got a copy right there.
Anything else on that?
So you'll have, uh, advantages, disadvantages in a, okay?
Item B is the, uh, Master Parks Plan, adopting the Master Parks Plan, two thousand twelve through two thousand sixteen. Jordan, would you like to speak on this?
This is just a, a plan that the DNR requires for all cities to have on file, um, to be eligible for grants. So this is just the next updated version, so...
This has been to committee?
Yeah, this, this has gone through the, uh, Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee, and, and they do recommend adoption of this.
Has it also gone to the Safe Routs Committee?
It has not.
Could it be reviewed by them?
Sure.
When you look at the existing park recommendations, this lead paragraph says that the parks are listed in order of priority for recommendations and future prioritizing for improvements to the park. So in other words, they're saying one through, whatever it is, is the order that should be done. First off, the remodeling of the Yard Hall at Legion Park, we've taken that out of the five-year, uh, CP, uh, out of the five-year plan. I spoke against that several times, I don't believe that should be in there. Number eight, the Highland Park, it says the almost forgotten facility, that's right, it is almost forgotten because we said two years ago, we were not gonna do anything in this, and if you put it anyplace, put it as number seventeen, end of the list.
Where's Highland Park?
Well, that's the one out there that we're not doing anything with.
Prairie View, you mean?
Well, they're calling it Highland Park now, I guess, I don't know.
No, that's the one with water and lutheria.
Highland over by the Armory?
Highland is off of Stevens, or Stevens Street by the Armory.
Okay, and this, where is this? So the other, I thought when we talked about a forgotten facility, I was still hoping we were forgetting that one.
That's number seventeen, the very last on the list.
Good, good place for it.
Okay.
Unlisted as Prairie View Park as number seventeen.
Put it on the end.
It is there.
Pull the yard.
And, and this is a plan, I mean, it, it doesn't mean that we're automatically spending money on these issues.
Well, I know that, but whenever you have a plan, people can't come, tend to come back a few years later and say, well, it was in the plan. I mean, when we're putting a plan out, everybody says, well, it's just a plan. A few years later, people say, it was in the plan, so... There's a difference in how you perceive it and when it's stated.
That's fair.
I'd like to know, I appreciate the care that you and the Recreation and Parks Committee have done in trying to not have their eyes too big for, uh, their plans for the future. We're in a tough time right now, probably will be for a few years, and maintaining is where we need to be. And I think we're doing a fairly good job of doing that and continue that. Any other questions on that? Did you want this to go to the Safe Routs Committee and then come back to us? Okay, would you do that? Probably have it back in about a month. Is there a deadline on this that you need to have it done by?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item C is a resolution and ordinance regarding class, excuse me, regarding Reserve Class B liquor licenses.
The License Committee has been meeting to discuss, um, reserve liquor license. And we've come up with a resolution and a proposed ordinance that establishes the reserve, um, the liquor license quota and then proposes language to, for a reserve liquor license.
Is there only one that we're allowed, or are there multiple ones?
Actually, we're allowed two reserve liquor licenses. Liquor, uh, reserve licenses are different than regular licenses. Um, there's a couple different differences. One of them is that, uh, with a regular Class B license, um, you can transfer it from owner to property, to a different property within the city. With the reserve, that's not allowable, it only stays with the one owner. And then the second thing is the, the license fee. There's a ten thousand dollar mandatory fee by statute for a, a reserve liquor license. At least a ten thousand dollar fee. So what we're proposing to do is to, um, set the fee at ten thousand dollars and then, um, create an application process which this ordinance will help with.
Could you tell me, uh, in, in the explanation, it talks about bona fide clubs and lodges situated and incorporated in the state for at least six years that apply for a reserve license are exempt from paying the minimum ten thousand initial issuance fee?
Correct.
Help me understand, uh, is there a definition of quote-unquote bona fide clubs and lodges?
Um, yes, there is. Um, I, I can't tell you what that is up hand, but it would be like your, uh-
Like an aux club?
Yes.
It's probably defined in statutes, if you want to add that to the staff note for the next meeting.
That'd be great.
It's in the statute.
It, it does say that they have been so for at least six years, so it wouldn't be somebody that could just start one up here and, and get that, so... Just to hang around for six years and are bona fide, whatever that means.
And in our case, although other municipalities sometimes, uh, provide economic assistance grants with a ten thousand fee, our License Committee wants to retain everything for the budget.
Correct. I'm sorry, I neglected that part.
And this has nothing to do with the two licenses? I think there are two licenses that are current, or is there one license that's currently, has been issued but is not being used?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with that.
That has nothing to do with that, okay.
The, the last question I have on this is you indicated that the license can't be sold to someone else at another premise. Can it be sold to someone who does business at the same premises?
Um, a license can't be sold.
I think in the beginning here, you said that our, our normal licenses can be sold to other people who could take them to a different place and use them.
Oh, they can be transferred.
Transferred.
You know, every once in a while, we'll have somebody like Steve's Pizza, when they transferred from their, um, downtown business to the top of Bain Street, that was a transfer of license. If he had had a reserve license, he wouldn't have been able to do that.
So he couldn't have taken it from one facility to the other?
Correct.
Could it be transferred to a new owner or registrant at the same location, I guess is what I'm asking.
Um, just one moment.
Under, under the circumstances where a business was sold that had a, a reserve Class B license, and if there was a new licensee that needed that license, they would only be able to obtain that license if they paid ten thousand dollars. There would be a slight wrinkle to that if a, the licensee was, for instance, a corporation, and the corporation had a reserve Class B license, and if that corporation was sold such that there was no new licensee, then, then the own, the new owner of that corporation, I don't believe, would have to pay a ten thousand dollar license fee.
I'm glad I'm not looking for any of these licenses, it's too complicated.
I'm, I'm sorry if I didn't explain that clearly, there's, there's wrinkles in it.
There's wrinkles.
But let's go back to if an individual acquires one of these licenses by paying ten thousand dollars, and they use it in a building, a bar somewhere. What are we saying that if, that they can't, they have to keep it in that facility? It can't go anywhere else?
That's the way I understood it, and I can research that further.
You know, and I, I'm not comfortable saying right now what the answer to that question is. I thought that they could transfer it, but I don't want to say that that's the way it is until we look at that again.
It might be worth doing that, just so we're clear on that next time.
Sure.
It's not gonna affect us here, but it might affect someone else.
But for the most part, if I did this and I had a building and I paid the ten thousand dollars and then I sold the building, the license is gone unless the new person applies for and pays ten thousand dollars for a license. I can't sell my bar as a business.
It's just like any other liquor license that can't be sold. The difference is this Class B reserve liquor license, the, the application, initial application fee for a new licensee is ten thousand dollars plus five hundred. Right?
Correct.
All right. Just like on a regular Class B liquor license, if you are a new licensed applicant, because you're buying this business that includes a bar and you need to get a license, you know, you have to, you, you're, it's five hundred bucks. That's, that's how much the old license costs.
Now it's ten thousand five hundred.
And for these reserve Class B, it's the same thing, except it's ten thousand dollars.
And five hundred.
Why is it so much?
Uh, state law requires it. It's the wisdom of the legislature.
And if I'm correct, then as part of this, the old, the existing licenses that we have under the old existing licenses, those will continue into the future, but we, they will not increase, we won't get any more of those.
Correct.
So the only new license that will be coming forward in the future will be these types of licenses.
Class B, Class B reserve.
Right.
And, and can we have an unlimited number of those?
No.
No, it's based upon population.
Correct.
Every five hundred increase in population, then another reserve liquor license, Class B liquor license is available.
And a Class B allows the sale of hard liquor, beer, wine, everything, or?
Um, it's a com, the combination license, uh, on premises consumption and off premises, uh, sale for off, off premises consumption, uh, smaller quantities of beer and liquor, right? That's what my understanding of it is.
Wow. Well, we have two of them. Anything else on that?
Well, the only other thing is, is that we talked about this in the Licensing Committee, is that we do have, we, we may have, we may have two, but the question is, is do we need to issue out two? Could we, if we wish to hold one in reserve, could we do that? For a specific reason? I think we could, I think that's what we decided.
I think that's what it says here. Hmm? I think that's what it says.
I don't understand that.
Meaning, we don't have to issue them if we don't want to, or we could hold one in reserve in case we have some idea?
Yes.
In case a new company, in order, in order to lure a new company coming to town, is that right? What you're talking about?
What sort of thinking about it?
Yeah, yeah, it would make sense.
Anything else on that?
They could say yes right away to move to Plavo.
Item D is the Zoning Code Amendment for outside eating and drinking areas. Joe, would you give us a brief rundown on this? I think this is in part designed to correct the problem of contiguous areas.
Well, I, I just thought it would be a good opportunity, uh, to take a look at our, uh, ordinance requirements for outside eating and drinking areas since we're considering the sidewalk café ordinance, which covers some of the same, uh, issues. Uh, the sidewalk café ordinance would be for that type of use on a public sidewalk. This ordinance would cover outside, outside eating, drinking areas, beer gardens, et cetera, on private property. Um, right now, we have the regulations governing that type of use in our zoning ordinance, but it really only addresses fencing requirements for that type of use. It doesn't have much else for standards. And as we were working on that sidewalk café ordinance, I thought, well, a lot of those same issues apply, uh, for this type of use. So I have a proposed regulation change that incorporates some of those same issues. Um, the fencing part of it, I, at least as proposed, I'm recommending we take that out of it. There's been a, a few conversations I've had with, uh, business owners over the years that would like to do that type of thing, and it's always been an issue with the fencing requirements. Um, for instance, uh, Steve's Pizza, their new location has, essentially, it's a private sidewalk in front of their restaurant. You get to there, and then there's the railing, and then there's a public sidewalk. Uh, under the current ordinance, they'd have to have a eight-foot-high fence around that, which would look absolutely absurd at that location. Um, uh, Country Kitchen had proposed a, a, an outside dining deck. They also have a liquor license, so if anybody wanted to have a beer out there, they'd have to have a fence. So I, I just thought it would be nice if we had a little bit more discretion as to when we would require a fence and when we wouldn't, instead of just making it a blanket requirement. So, uh, as I'm proposing, it would be, not be a requirement, but it could be made part of a conditional use permit when it's approved. So, uh, the Plan Commission took a look at this and recommended approval, so I just thought it would be the opportune time to have this discussion. So it's just on for information at this point, but...
So what you would do is turn it into a, an actual ordinance change?
Correct.
And then bring it back for information and action? We are liking what we're seeing.
Right. Yeah, if you've got any other ideas or issues, you know, I think, like I said, I think now's the time to be looking at it.
I guess the question I have is, do we have separate, I guess it would be state laws relative to if you are a bar or if you're a restaurant bar? So would this, would this ordinance address that? I mean, I can understand Steve's Pizza, for example, or Country Kitchen, they're primarily a restaurant, they also serve liquor. Um, but obviously, there will be some other locations where they don't serve food, or I think there's some state law about a certain percentage has to be a food, um, income?
Fifty percent, this, yeah.
So I, I guess I'm wondering about that, if that's something to look at in terms of fencing required or not required. I don't know, and I was wondering also if the chief has had a chance to look at this and have any comments?
I don't have any questions, more so with the, uh, café, um, ordinance. Joe and I have been corresponding about that. I think it's workable.
I mean, I, I guess I just-
Would you, would you look into that, because those are good questions about, we don't want to find ourselves in violation of state ordinance with this. Make sure that we don't have some kind of funny requirement to have fifty percent or whatever it is, so we make sure that-
Should, I, I have a question. The sidewalk café ordinance is going to be shared with, or the proposed ordinance is going to be shared by, with those people who might be affected. Would it not also be wise to share this proposed change with that same group?
Why not?
Yeah.
Put them together. When you share them, that is. Anything else on this? No, it's just information for now, so... Next on the agenda is changes to Chapter Thirty-three, the rental code fee. Next on the agenda is changes to chapter thirty-three, the rental code fee. This is to enact a specific fee for late.
Well, it's, sorry, it's basically, I think, to address a discrepancy. We've discussed this issue a couple times now. When we made modifications to chapter thirty-three, we included the provision for a late fee, but at that time, it said basically after sixty-one days, or sixty-one days after the license is expired. When we revisited the issue just in August, when we talked about that notification policy, at that time, the discussion was, as soon as the license expires, we could issue a late fee. So, you know, we've got two different ideas there as far as when this fee could be collected. So I think that should be made consistent. To me, it makes sense to at least have the ability to assess a late fee anytime after the license expired. So I have an ordinance that would propose that change. On a related issue, when that late fee was enacted by motion, it was a late fee of twenty-five dollars per unit, not to exceed a hundred dollars. I guess staff is looking for some clarification on how we would impose that late fee, especially the hundred-dollar maximum. We issue a license per unit, and if a unit is late, it's going to be twenty-five dollars. So I don't know when we would ever get up to that hundred-dollar maximum.
Wouldn't it be the case if you had a, an apartment complex, a fiveplex, let's say?
Fourplex or fiveplex.
But the issue I've got is, well, I'll use an extreme example, Fox Ridge Development, they've got multiple units in the building, they've got multiple buildings on the property, and they've got multiple properties with buildings on them. Those buildings were constructed over a period of time. They all have different license dates. So, you know, if they, if they're late on this unit this month, and they come in the next month and give another late one, when do we, when do we reach that hundred, and is it, it's good for that year? Is it good for that month? When, when can we again assess a late fee? I'm not sure how we would implement that.
I think if you have four units at one time, four or more at one time, that are late.
That's how I was thinking of it. It was simultaneous. They're all expiring at the same time.
Same day.
Same day.
So based on the expiration date?
Yes.
Up to a hundred dollars per day.
Okay.
Anything else on that one? Item F is the snowmobile trail in Mountview Park. The Driftbusters would like to make a modification to the existing route.
Yeah. Mr. Zeseda from the Driftbusters Club is here to explain in a little more detail. However, what we've had is, in the past, there has been a trail that would go through Mountview Park, and when we did the Northeast Interceptor Project, we put in this pedestrian trail, and DNR required us to remove the culverts that the Driftbusters Club used to use in the wintertime to get across the waterway and continue on through the park. The pedestrian bridge is not suitable for snowmobiles, so there, there's a two-pronged effort here. First one is, the Driftbusters is requesting permission from the DNR to create its own bridge or culvert alongside our pedestrian bridge so that they can carry snowmobiles over that wetland. If that's denied, the second prong of their effort is, they would like permission from the common council to ride the shoulder of Mitchell Hollow Road from where the trail crosses at the Claire property, up to a suitable location, cross in, cross the street, enter Mountview Park, and then wind its way back in, into the woods to get back out onto their trail. He and I have, have walked it, and he was going to place markers along the proposed path in case any of you wanted to look at it and see where we're talking about. The idea here is to keep the snowmobilers away from the asphalt trail that's in Mountview Park, just basically get them around the pond and around that wetland area and get them back down to the trail. As I say here, snowmobile trails must be approved by the common council, and so our issues are, does the city wish to continue to allow a snowmobile trail through the city? Assuming that's yes, do we want to designate the trail along the corridors that have been used in past practice? And then, would you also allow them to use that alternate route if DNR does not agree to allow the crossing that they're requesting? If you have any specific questions regarding the snowmobiles or snowmobilers or anything like that, Mr. Zeseda is here that can speak about the snowmobile club.
Since he sat here for the whole meeting, why don't we let him come up and say something?
Come on up and state your name and local address, and tell us about snowmobiles.
Zeseda, Seventy Ridge Avenue. Howard has pretty much put it all in a, in a well. We want to continue the trail. Back to my records, we had permission twelve years ago to start this trail through Mountview Park from the city. And after looking at it, he talked of a bridge or a culvert down there. I do think we can actually put a trail down there beside the bridge with minimal effort, maybe some natural rock fill, but I want to clear that first with the DNR, which has been a slow process, and then with the city, again, that they accept what we propose. I'm asking for the trail above the pond in case this doesn't go through this first year, so we can continue our trail through the city. Our other options, if none of this comes about, we would be, end up crossing our trail out by West Mound Road, and we'd be taking a lot of business and tourists away from the restaurants, Napa Auto Supply's, the gas stations that we all frequent in town, because snowmobilers generally will ride through a town and don't, just like if you're coming down the highway, you don't want to drive a mile into town to get a sandwich and drive a mile out. You're going to go on to the next town that you pass through. And I also brought with me, if you'd like, for a view, some county maps that kind of shows where the trails lead that we go through Platteville. So you're welcome to one of these if you'd like. Any questions?
Pass those down, I'd appreciate it.
I, I do have a question, Bill, and that is, I'm assuming that none of this trail is on the hiking and bicycling trail.
Part of it now overlaps where you guys have done Sewer Intercept. We always had a trail through there, and they've kind of straightened it out on that, on the gravel portion down there. And through, also through Mountview Park. Originally, we made all them trails. Now they've paved over what we, a lot of what we built originally.
Because I would be opposed to having snowmobiles on any trail that has been paved for biking and walking. I just...
Well, these trails are not paved this time, and I hear that's undetermined whether they're paved. We don't like to travel on paved trails, but we do in the Belmont area and other places. It's just not ideal for us. We're also required by law that if there's a person present, it's fifteen miles an hour within a hundred feet of them to travel on a snowmobile, for safety's sake.
The trails that we're talking about currently have a gravel surface. They are not paved with asphalt that we're talking about right now. But that's, that's part of that first question that I have in your staff note. Do we wish to continue this?
We also, through our funding, we have funding to maintain trails. If there is any damage from washouts or a low snow year where the grass may be damaged, we generally reseed them and take care of it with our, by our club and our members and our budget.
You said, Howard, this went to the plan commission. Did this, I mean, who in our city has responsibility for looking at these trails that?
Well, the Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee reviewed it and, and recommended approval subject to coordinating the specific route through the park with, with staff. As far as reviewing the condition of trails through the parks, I suppose that would be me and, and our Parks Department people to make sure that any of those trails are, are maintained. But as, as Bill said, he has the people and the funding to, to do that maintenance if, if that's needed.
Bill, I have a question for you. I recognize that the snowmobile club had a trail through the Claire property, and then the city came in and put in our pedestrian trail in the same location. Is it possible to slide the snowmobile trail five feet to the left or to the right so that it avoids pedestrian trail?
Yeah, we can stay to the edge of a trail if the, if slope is not too much. I mean, we'd prefer not to ride on top of gravel. With low snow, we'd prefer people don't ride it off, and we try to regulate that, but it isn't a hundred percent. We have about ten percent of snowmobilers that belong to the club, and we're trying to make these safe and reliable for everybody.
So when you post the signs, you could do it to the left or to the right of the pedestrian?
If it's not too sloped, yes.
Okay. That's gravel up through there anyway.
I, I'm worried about somebody walking and having kids or something, being scared of a snowmobile coming. I recognize they're supposed to go fifteen, but if, if only ten percent of the club members are members of your club, that's a large unknown population and...
And I realize, yes, there's that chance. If you were to ask around other communities, especially the farther north you go, snowmobile generally has a good relationship with the communities. We have people out using our trails for dog sledding, for cross-country skiing, for now even down here, we have winter biking on our trails when we have room. So we're wel, and they're welcome to. We don't mind that. We don't want to do any, hurt anybody either, you know?
Yeah.
There's potentially that chance, no matter any time you intermix vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
The other comment in, in the memo is the PCA, Howard says, I believe the PCA would prefer no motorized vehicles. So has the PCA seen this request, Howard? Have they been talking to Bill or to you?
I, I'm not sure. You got a person sitting right there.
And that was new to me. What is the PCA?
Community Arboretum.
A community arboretum.
We got to take care of the bike tracks.
So maybe that's something that the PCA needs to take a look at.
Do you want them to take a look at it before we come back with this?
Well, I just think that, yeah, that they would probably appreciate the opportunity to even talk to you about, you know, your proposal and...
Yep. I feel here, I'm kind of catching up. They've gone ahead and proposed all these trails where we already were, and now I got to come back in and catch up. So I'll talk to anybody we need to. We want to work it out.
If you do that, because I think we'd like to keep this going here. We just need to find a way to coexist without issues, so.
I can let you know when we have it made. Johnny have it up at mine.
I don't know how I would take you to do that. I'm inclined to maybe leave this on as information for next time until we know that you've had a chance.
And that was my understanding, is to be informational tonight to give you.
Yeah, so I don't think you'll be starting by the end of October.
Well, we are, but we can wait on those sections, you know. We're outstanding last week, so.
Driving the snowmobiles or?
No, preparing trails.
Okay, all right. I was like, geez, you know, you surprised me with the winter biking.
Stay on the old railroad bed that we got to make?
No, we actually go behind the fertilizer plant. We go up the, yeah, the old railroad bed, off to the side of the, now we go off to the side of the waterway.
You can run right down that berm too.
All right, thank you. Last item under information is the Adopt a Park Program. Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee is recommending that the Adopt a Park Program be implemented. It would give citizens an opportunity to volunteer in their city's parks, give citizens a chance to give back to the city by helping clean and maintain the parks and provide a safer, more beautiful park experience, so. Looks pretty straightforward to me.
What's the end, is the, what's the end goal for this? Is this, is the end goal to have the volunteers take over full maintenance, to cut budget, to, what's the?
I, I think that one of the goals that I see is that it, it helps to foster pride in the community parks and community organizations, as well as to provide additional amenities that staff doesn't do right now. For example, a volunteer group may want to plant a flowerbed or, or come in and rake the yard to help maintain some of the parks. It's much like the Adopt a Road program, where you'll see the little sign on the side of the road that says this mile maintained by, this would be similar. I want to thank Jordan and Howard for putting this together, and I, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I have a question. Now that we have two roundabouts in town, who's going to be maintaining the circles? Would that come under this program, you think?
Tree Steiner. No, yeah, that's certainly an option.
We'll get NASCAR to sponsor it, all left, no, all left turns, NASCAR.
We certainly could add that to this. We don't want to encourage people to walk into the roundabouts, so we would have to be very careful as to what features they were to put in the roundabout. I know that the roundabouts do have designs planned for them, so...
Oh, do they? By the DOT or?
No.
I think Howard is working with university students, aren't you, to come up with something?
I have, I have some, some options that were developed by university horticulture students. I have not had the opportunity at this point to bring them in front of other committees, but they came up with a lot of very nice, wonderful designs. The criteria that I had for them were low budget, low maintenance, looking nice kind of, kind of things, especially the low maintenance costs.
And color?
Color, yes. And I think they've done, done a good job with that. It's just I haven't had the opportunity to, to bring those forward to the specific committees for review and forwarding to the council.
Okay, just curious. I've, you know, been in a lot of other towns where, you know, the center and the roundabouts look very nice.
Okay.
Okay, what we'll do is turn off the cameras and go to a work session to discuss the 2013 city budget, mixes services, and so on. We'll take about a five-minute break before we do that.